The next item on the agenda is approval of agenda. I need a motion to approve. Motion by Ms. Smith?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. It passes seven to zero. For the record, I would like to indicate that Dr. Thornton is out tonight due to an illness. I'm sure he is watching from home. And Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Demana is filling in. Thank you, Mr. Demana. Welcome to the stage. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. There's one item, though, we need to table, which is Item B, Approval of Minutes from the Executive Session 3/24/2022. So I need a motion to approve Item A, Approval of Minutes, Regular Meeting 3/24/2022. Item C, The Enrollment Report, April 1st, 2022. Item D, The School Police Report, March 1st, 2022. Item E, School Bus Inspection Reports, April 1st, 2022. And Item F, Residency Tourency Report, April 1st, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Fiorella. Second by Mrs. Rogalsky. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. It passes seven to zero. Next item on the agenda is Personnel Announcements. Mrs. Dunkinson?
Good evening. I have a couple items for you tonight. First off, I have the retirement of Karen Russell after 30 years of service for Cumberland, effective October 21st, 2022. She's a special educator at Cumberland High School. I congratulate her on her retirement. Secondly, I have three coaching appointments. Brittany Bowden, Lacrosse Girls University. Kayla Serva, Outdoor Track and Field Assistant Coach. And Luke Cunningham, Tennis Boys University. And that is all. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Dunkinson.
Next item on the agenda is Report Out of Executive Session Meeting on April 14th, 2022. Report out of Executive Session Votes. We did not take any votes in our session tonight. The next item is Vote to Seal the Minutes of the Executive Session. And, motion to seal. Motion by Mrs. Rogalsky? Second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes seven to zero. The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Mr. Demana?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Madam Chair. I did speak to Dr. Thornton a little while ago, and we wish him well and a speedy recovery. I know he is watching, and I'm sure he will text me if I forget anything. Yeah, he's expedient with that. So the first, the first item, the Town Impact Study. He is asking that we table that discussion. He's awaiting additional information from the town on that. And so he'd like to put that on an agenda in the near future. Okay? As far as Item B, the discussion regarding middle school student attendance and boundary lines. I'm going to ask Mr. Mike Chandler, our Director of IT, to lead us in that conversation, please.
We had met with the school committee members last Monday regarding some of the areas that we wanted to take a look at for the middle school change, potential changes and boundary changes. So, yes. Two, yes, I'm sorry. Two school committee members. Yep, no. Yeah, two, two, two school committee members that were, that volunteered to do it. They're the outlouge members, Paul DeMonica and Kerry Feather. Some of the discussions that we looked at were around how far the lines were going up for if Ashton was going to be part of a feeder school. And then what it would look like because the Ashton lines that went to North and McCourt, where that split would be, and how far up Menden Road. So we displayed everything with the committee members and had some discussions around what the population looked like in those areas. And then we had come up with a new design map with partnering with them to look at what those areas look like and what would fit into McCourt Middle School. So on the map, on the left-hand side, you can see it's shaded a little bit lighter in pink. And this covers from the Westwood Ventry area down Menden Road to 295, including Cumberland Crossings. Currently, the Lipida State area goes to McCourt. And as we're looking at other areas cutting across the town horizontally, we looked at going from Lay Road south on Little Pond County down to Diamond Hill, including Broadview Acres. And then the lower section of Bear Hill Road from the middle of Bear Hill, including the lower section of Heinz Road, and then down to Abbot Run Valley, south of 295 would be the areas that we'd be looking at. Anybody has any questions?
Oh, Ms. Smith?
Mr. Chandler, when will we have a listing of student numbers? And maybe this is going to be something we can table for Dr. Thornton, of the student numbers as well that represent these groups? Because certainly the impact of where the town growth is going to be coming from, and especially if it is on the southern side of town, will impact this as well. So I'm just trying to determine when we can get numbers of students impacted with those three areas that we're looking at.
Right now, we're looking at around 45 students that are in that population that's going to be moving over, if they were to move over. We're waiting for some information to come from the town, from the Planning Department, because some of the housing facilities that are going to be built in different areas of the town, they should have an impact study done and be able to provide that to us. Hopefully by the end of the month is what they were thinking.
So we have to know by the end of the month as well, or in May, for the bus, busing as well?
Yes.
So this is something that we really do need to move forward on and try to prepare because I know personally, I would not like to see us make boundary changes to have to remake them again in a couple of years. And we need to, to look at the whole big picture and have that information available.
I was one of those that looked at the maps and where we thought we should move kids. We know off Bear Hill Road by Cogile is about 110 to 120 new homes that are going to be built there. And the, the people who own the land got approval before. Didn't happen, and went back to court because the town was saying you're going to have to do it over again. And all those kids are going to be closer to McCourt than they would be towards North Cumberland Middle School. So that was one idea about how many of those children were going to be able to capture because if you have 120 homes, you have one or two children in that school, in that home, that's definitely going to affect how we, you know, equally put the kids out between North Cumberland and McCourt. And the other was on the, looking at the group next to Lipida Estates as well. Again, how many children to equal this out? We know North Cumberland cannot have all these children continue to go to that school. We just don't have the resources. We don't have the money to hire more teachers. And it would be a shame that we have all the room at McCourt, that we're not moving some of the children there. That, you know, there was always this north-south boundary line at 295. Well, it's changed now. I mean, the town continues to grow. A couple of years ago, we had to have a study done that Ride made us do before we could even do the, the $83 million bond, which came out to be 78, 79 million. And they've expect, they're expecting a lot of growth in the northern end of the part of town. And the school does not have the, the school district, nor does the town, have money to expand North Cumberland Middle School and make it bigger. So we have to move boundary lines. You know, we're not going to make everyone happy in regards to it, but I mean, both schools are good schools. And so, you know, the numbers aren't there. We don't have the exact numbers yet because of the fact that Ride, I mean, not Ride, but the town hasn't given us the information that we need to, we need to see. Like, they're saying we're going to only have 11 new kids going to move into In-N-Out when they put out a couple of hundred apartments in there. Valley Breach today, St. Patrick's, they're talking 35 units there, townhouses, next to CVS on Broad Street. You know, we need to know those numbers really good. And the same with what's being built at Broad Street and Menden Road with McNulty property there. He's putting up 30, I think it's 35 in total apartments above the storefronts that he's planning on doing in two buildings. So we have to take into consideration how we're going to, you know, do this and do it once. Like, Ms. Smith says, you know, we don't want to do this and two years later do it again and again and again because we just, the town cannot continue issuing building permits for all intents and purposes, but legally they, legally they have to. But we've got to break this up so that more children are moved to the McCourt Middle School area for middle school. So that's where it stands right now. Nothing's been definitive. We've just looked at maps and tried to zero in on, you know, can these three kids or four kids here in the street here, can they be moved with the other kids and go from there? So that's where it stands right now. Nothing's definitive. And I expect in the next couple of weeks, we'll make some determination once the town gives us the data that we need to make a informed decision before we do anything and jump, you know, and make, and do something that we're going to regret doing down the road. Thank you.
Mrs. Feather? Okay, good. Sorry. And just to add to that, I'm the other committee member who was working with, with the Superintendent and Mr. Chandler to, to try to, and Mr. Demonica, to try to draw these lines. I want to just address with this, the particular, this particular situation, the McCourt and NCMS situation. What we're trying to do here is alleviate an immediate concern. The immediate concern is that there's two, we, we will be overcrowded at NCMS. And Mrs. Cofflin was, Principal Cofflin was, you know, describing this to us in a meeting last month, I believe. And, and the situation is dire. So we definitely, and we have the space at McCourt. There, we're very fortunate that we have excellent schools all over town. And so, you know, it's, this is, this is definitely something that, and again, as Mr. Demonica said, it's not definitive yet, but we feel pretty comfortable with, well, I feel pretty comfortable with the way this is written.
Mr. Collins?
You know, we've obviously heard a lot of correspondence regarding this issue. And I think a lot of families just, quite frankly, don't want their kids moving. And that's very noble. Parents want what's best for their kids. They know what's best for their kids. But as we've said repeatedly, you know, NCMS, Community School, they're busting at the seams capacity-wise. So when you look at the, the current map right now, you know, there's, it's less than arbitrary because you have, right in the, right in the center right there, you have a pink spot that's McCourt, but it's closer to NCMS than the places to the left and right of it. So, and I commend Mr. Demonica and Ms. Feather in undertaking this because what we're trying to do is, what I gather we're trying to do is we're trying to create an arbitrary line based on distance as opposed to, you know, people's personal needs or, you know, connections or whatever the case was last time they redistricted. But it looks like, you know, distance, as I said last meeting, distance is the most, I think, arbitrary way of doing it. You know, you know, when you look over, I talked to somebody who lives off in New Clark. New Clark is up, if you don't know, it's, it's north of the high school. Under the original plan, those families would have had to go to McCourt, which was about almost seven miles, I think, five, maybe six to seven miles. Whereas they're less than two miles from NCMS. Whereas you have people down off of Bear Hill Road who, you know, they're less than two miles from NCMS, I mean, from McCourt, but they're much farther away from NC, much farther away from NCMS. So, you know, regardless of what happens, like anything that I've learned in my time in this committee, it'll never make everybody happy. So we just have to do what's fair and what's equitable. And I just want to add too, I talked to Dr. Masterson in McCourt last night, and he's, he's offered to let people come down and take a look at the school and tour the place. You know, if you want to give him a call, give the school a call, just to see what it's all about. Because, you know, he, he told me, he goes, once people see McCourt, they're going to be very happy with the place. They're going to like it, and it'll feel a little more comfortable. So, you know, what, what we need to do is obviously, we have to, clearly, we have to redraw the districts. But at the same time, we also have to just, you know, not rip the Band-Aid off. And parents have to get acclimated before next year's start of school. So I really appreciate what everybody's done. We're obviously not voting tonight. We still have some things to mull over. And as Mr. Demonica said, it's not a done deal. But I think, I like the way, the spirit of this map works, and I'm sure there are a few kinks to work out. So thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions? I would like to personally thank Mr. Demonica and Mrs. Feather for taking this on and working with Dr. Thornton. Redistricting is never easy, but even we've seen the changes that you all have suggested based off of the original plan and have really put some good input into this. And so again, we're not voting tonight. It's just under discussion. But you're, I think you're making good logical progress. So, thank you. Yes, Mr. Collins?
I forgot, I forgot to add one thing, too. There's a lot of the arguments that are being made as to why, you know, parents want what's best for their children. But the argument that they're making applies to every single kid in town. So if your issue is, you know, my friends, my, his friends go to the school, he's comfortable with the school, somebody is going to be redistricted. And those families on the other side of the town, you may get what you want. But from a committee standpoint, we're, we're, now the argument shifts from one neighborhood to the other, where that family has the same argument. So we're kind of in a, a tight situation where we have to hear the same arguments depending on the neighborhood. So that's why I again go back to distance as the, as the fairest way of doing it, knowing full well not everybody's going to be happy.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Any other comments? Oh, Mr. Fiorella.
Although I generally agree with Mr. Collins' take on this, distance can't be the only benchmark, only because it has to be more about population. As you can see, that, you know, the southern part of town has a denser population. So that middle line, over time, is probably going to have to be adjusted. And over time, I mean, like 10, 20, 30, you know, because we're probably going to do this every 10 years. But distance will not matter as much as just sheer population, especially if some of the northern parts of town get really, really developed, as well as some of the big developments happening in the southern part of town. So it's got to be a, an overall approach.
Yes, and one of the things we need to be doing is looking at this, you know, five years out across all of our schools. We know with the school construction bond that that is increasing capacity in some schools to allow us to reduce capacity where it may be overcrowded. So there will be more of this coming. This is just the beginning. And I think we could do a better job of projecting that and communicating that more in advance. And I think, I think we're going to get there. This just is the first, the first round. Okay, thank you, Mr. Demana. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chandler, are you done?
I'm done.
Oh, thank you.
There is one more item, Madam Chair. So Item C, under the Superintendent's Report, Dr. Thornton just wanted me to briefly give an update. The school department is gearing up for a very busy summer as it pertains to construction. There are going to be three schools that are going to be undergoing construction for next year. Community School will be one of the schools. They'll be getting a new cafeteria. However, they will be able to continue with instruction as they normally do at Community during that construction. Ashton, they'll be beginning construction at Ashton as well. They're getting a new wing. Once again, school can operate as normal there, as it normally would. And Garvin is the third school. They're undergoing a major renovation. And they will be transitioning up here to the trans. Cumberland Hill will be transitioning back to their brand-new, modern facility, which everyone's excited about. And so he just wanted me to mention that along with, with those transitions, two schools moving at the same time, three buildings that are going to be renovated. He just wanted me to remind everyone that he's going to be meeting with Colliers at the end, with the team at the end of the month, to talk about and plan out those transitions and that he will be communicating with everyone on the committee. And certainly, if you have any questions, just reach out to him anytime. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Demana? Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Demana, for pinching tonight. Next up on the agenda is Reports of Standing Committees. First item is Fiscal Management Subcommittee Update. Mr. Collins?
Good eve, good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, good evening, everybody. Thank you. The fiscal subcommittee, management subcommittee met this evening. We have the payment of bills in the amount of $1,420,426.85 for you later. And we have 15 resolutions. There's no other major issues to report to the rest of the committee other than the budget process that we're going through right now is still fluid. We're still, you know, going to be actively engaging the town council and the mayor's office over that. So there'll be more to report out over the next few weeks or so, hopefully. But on that, we have the resolutions and the payment of the bills. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Next, Policy and Procedures Subcommittee Update. Mr. Fiorella?
Yes, policy did meet on Tuesday evening. We had a discussion regarding the purchasing policy, which is overdue for a, for review. It's, last time it was done was, I believe, 2017. So we're going to just look at tightening up some processes and figure out a way, when we have, especially next year, when we have all these resolutions, we're going to try to, hopefully try to streamline some of the resolution process through the purchasing policy, if possible. As part of the purchasing policy, we will also be revisiting an old draft of the contract policy because they're going to go hand in hand. So that was just briefly mentioned the other night, and that'll come back in a, whenever that work is done. So.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorella. Achievement and Communications Subcommittee Update. This subcommittee met last night, and our main agenda topic was to review the school improvement plan at McCourt Middle School. So Dr. Masterson, Assistant Principal Storm, Academic Coach Mrs. Rayo, all attended and gave us their strategic plan on where they want the school to be heading and what they want to achieve in this coming year. And it was clear to all of us that these administrators and teachers at McCourt know their students inside and out. And one of the questions that I asked is, they have seen, you know, their proficiency rates increased steadily over time. There was a drop due to COVID, but they were increasing steadily over time. And I asked Dr. Masterson why, what he attributed to that. And, you know, they all said that their teachers know their students so individually, and they know the assessment numbers, and they know where students need to move to, that they're able to all collectively ensure that their students are getting the, you know, the best education that they can get. We also had a lot of discussion about things they're doing with their ESAR funds. You know, each school got a certain amount of money from ESAR to help with achievement loss. And so they've implemented academic proficiency centers. They have a lot of personal reach out to their students and to families to ensure kids will come. They're offering some free summer school programs. So there's a lot that they're doing at McCourt to really be focused on students and, and help their overall proficiency and achievement. And we also had an interesting discussion about the diversity of the population at McCourt and the English-language learners or the, the multi-language learners that are all centered at McCourt. From even from, you know, NCMS, they would, if they were in that district, they would come to McCourt. And there's a lot of targeted, great work happening to help the students who are coming in, some who have no English skills and coming, there's, you know, I know a student from Afghanistan and some immigrants that are coming in. And, you know, they're embracing them and really, really working hard to help these students get a great education. So it was, it was really a wonderful meeting. So thank you, Dr. Masterson. The next item on the agenda is the District Health and Wellness Subcommittee Update. Mrs. Rogalsky?
The District Health and Wellness Committee actually met on April 7th. We started our meeting with a presentation from John Marsland, who is the president of the Blackstone River Watershed Council. And he also works with the Friends of the Blackstone River. He gave a really interesting presentation on a concept called Blue Mind, which basically is how you can harness the feelings of stress relief and anxiety relief that you get when you are around in, on, under the water. And, I mean, if we think about how we feel when we're at the beach or when we're on a boat, or it really is true, and being the ocean state, we have quite the opportunity for that. But from there, we concentrated on the Blackstone River because it's really undergone quite a resurgence in the past 15 years. And Mr. Marsland was presenting some of the things that we've done, that they've done. For example, we've gone from 30, three species of fish to 30 species of fish in the river, the cleaning up that they've done. And we kind of branched out into a discussion of that and how we can begin to incorporate the Blackstone River, which is this fantastic resource right in our backyard with the schools, whether it be field trips, science classes, PTA walkathons, a couple of different ideas. So we're kind of throwing out some ideas for being able to use this wonderful resource that we have right in our backyard. After that, we had updates from the Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition. The first was that the waivers for the free meals, school district-wide from the USDA, will be ending. And so we really want to make sure that forms are being filled out. Perhaps some families have moved into the category of qualifying for free meals. And some families are still there but don't know that they have to fill out an application because they have been provided for the past two years. So we really want to make a push to get that information out there that parents and families know to fill out the applications. Right, we also found out that the Healthy Schools Coalition and RITO are working on an app that's going to promote adolescent health. It's in the hopes of providing medically accurate resources that students can use instead of, say, getting their information from TikTok or Snapchat or Instagram. But medically accurate resources that they can use on an app that they can download. And perhaps if there are questions they don't want to ask in public, something that they can access right there. And the last we heard from them was there's a new program coming out from CVS and its partners for a three-week program in May to get kids ages five to 12 out and playing off of their devices, just to kind of create healthy lessons when they're young. And so that's something that teachers are able to apply for to see if they can get a stipend. They provide jump ropes and T-shirts and things for kids to take home or gym classes to use. And then after that, we just continued working on reviewing and updating the policy with an accurate representation of what's going on in our schools. And that's it. Our next meeting will be in June.
Sounds like a great meeting. The next item on the agenda is Comments from the Public. And so the way that comments from the public work is you can come up, you state your name and address. There is a three-minute time limit, and it is a one-way comments, you know, to us. It is not where we are not able to respond and debate and have a conversation. It is a one-way from the public to the school committee. So if anyone from the public would like to comment, you can come up to the microphone, state your name and your address, and we will have our three-minute time limit. Mr. Fiorella keeps track.
Hello, my name is Sean McCurley. I live at 31 Follett Street. And I actually wanted to just make some brief comments about the, the next agenda item. On Tuesday night, we had the opportunity, representative sample of the parents from our neighborhood over in the Follett Street area, had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Fiorella and Superintendent to discuss the redistricting from Community back over to, or from Community to Cumberland Hill. And we just wanted to make sure that, that our voices were heard. There was, you know, hearing the comments earlier about not everybody can be happy. And I don't envy any of you in your positions in looking at, you know, nobody has a crystal ball with trying to anticipate population control, and you can't do that. But part of what we think sometimes is missing is making sure that the voices are heard and that a one-size-fits-all approach necessarily doesn't always fit the equation. Especially when we look at the past two and a half years that the kids have experienced with the instability, being in school, not being in school, being removed from school, being stressed with their social networks. Part of that is, if you're not happy and you're not socially connected, you're not learning. So that ultimately ties back to the learning in a healthy environment for the children. So when we had an opportunity to meet, we proposed three or four different solutions or supplemental solutions that would be part of that plan. We understand that the redistricting does have to happen. But our, our take on it is that we want to make sure that the kids are being considered in that as well. Especially those that could be transitioning soon and having to make a double jump after coming off of two and a half years of not having a solid year of schooling, having to go to fifth grade in a new school, and then having to bounce again from fifth and then having to bounce again from fifth grade to the middle school. That, to me, I think, I have adults that are at work that are having trouble transitioning back into an office setting, let alone a 10-year-old having to go from one grade to a brand-new school and then again to middle school. So in, in closing, we just want to make sure that, we're trying to make this as collaborative a possible a solution. And we're hoping that, you know, mostly everybody will be able to benefit from that solution, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tim McDevitt, 35 Follett, next door to Sean here. So, real quick, this is off the cuff. I appreciate everything you guys do. You're in a tough spot with all these decisions and negotiations you're having to make. So if I could steal a couple lines from what I've already heard with regards to other topics. I've heard if it's not this neighborhood that would have to shift middle schools, it's another neighborhood, right? We are not asking for that here. We are not suggesting go find another neighborhood to quote-unquote pick on. That's not what we're asking for. I heard make an informed decision. We ask that you make an informed decision when it comes to this. It is not, and it may not need to be, a one-size-fits-all. There are, there are other options that we presented to you in an email. What I have not heard, and we didn't hear the other day from Dr. Thornton, I didn't hear it discussed tonight, was the timeline of Cumberland Hill and that construction project. I think it would be fair to say this is not one construction project in the country that is on schedule, ever, never mind right now. So I would really like to understand or hear or be referred to where we could see the timeline of that project. Dr. Thornton referenced a date, late August, for the last piece to be finished. I have concerns with that, given that hypothetically all of these 42 children do move, the project is not ready, and now we've just overloaded a number of classrooms in Cumberland Hill. So I would, I would like to be referred or pointed to where we could see that timeline of the project. If I refer to ourselves as the Rolling Acres Crew, whatever we're called, I don't know. But we are a cross-representation of all grades at community. And we met with Dr. Thornton. We've had some neighborhood discussions. It is not all fourth-grade parents. It is not all kindergarten parents. It is a cross-reference. And cohesively, we've discussed, hey, that model may not fit me, but it may fit you. And I understand your concerns, too. And we understand there are concessions to be made, and I heard it's not going to make everyone happy. We 100% agree with that. My family is a, we have a fourth-grade son right now and a kindergarten daughter. So our son is a rising fifth grader. Our daughter is a rising first grader. No way do I think that all of these students could remain at community. Absolutely not. It just wouldn't fit. Rising fifth graders, I believe Dr. Thornton said there are 11 of them. Team Dad is a population of children that you can do the right thing for those kids, graduate with their, with their friends, and transition once. I think that's a lot to ask for those 11 children over five classrooms to have to stay after the two years we all know about, transition once to here, to Cumberland Hill, and then to the middle school. So I ask for your consideration of those alternatives we've proposed. And again, thank you for your time.
Hi, good evening. I'm Hillary McCurley, 31 Follett Street. Tim said many of the things that I was going to focus on today. But you wouldn't, you would not be surprised, as you've probably done your own research. But changing schools in any situation during normal times is very challenging. A recent McKinsey report talks about the lingering effects that children have had unfinished learning, particularly in this pandemic. And so while we closed 2021 in some normalcy, right? I think it's been the most challenging part of our children's education that the nation has ever experienced. And I'm sure you've also read, the analysis shows that pandemic kids, on average, are about five months behind in math and four months behind in reading. So the fallout from this pandemic threatens, really, all of our children and the generations in which they have opportunities in the future as well. You know, we're moving into a mental health pandemic now, right? So we're finally approaching an endemic, which I'm very thankful for. But we've had family members that have died from COVID, relatives in the hospital on vents. And our daughter's experienced fear from COVID herself and wondering if she was going to die, too, when she had it. So the social isolation and the well-being of our kids has to be an option that you're considering when thinking about these children. I know that there's been fear and withdrawal and loneliness and depression in our home. I'm sure you've all experienced similar things as well. So please, I think, as you're considering your options and the ones that we've presented to you, in particular, I have an upcoming fifth grader. I can't imagine another significant change in her life right now. And the data that Dr. Thornton was able to provide us does support that I feel that these upcoming fifth graders would be able to remain in the school in which they've been in. So in closing, you know, please, this is not a lift and shift, as you've mentioned earlier before. And I would be very thankful if you would put some significant thought into these upcoming fifth graders, please. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carrie McDevitt, and I live at 35 Follett Street. I have a kindergartner and a fourth grader currently at community. And I, along with my neighbors, my husband, who just spoke, were at the meeting on Tuesday afternoon with Dr. Thornton and Mr. Fiorello. I got it? So after that meeting, we sent proposals to your group. And I'm here to ask that you would really consider those so that we can have minimal disruption to our kids. I completely understand the numbers, and I listened to everything. I took notes, and I understand that we need to redistrict. I just think that, I really would ask you to consider the options of such as moving the kids gradually or looking at the, the fourth-grade population of those 11 kids. In my own experience, similar to many people, my fourth-grade son had a lot of anxiety over the past couple of years and being in and out of school and virtual, et cetera. And we've worked really hard to get him to a good place in his fourth-grade year. And I, it breaks my heart to think that I would have to tell him that he has to move to a new school for his last year in elementary school. So again, I, you are in a hard position, and I understand the need to redistrict. I just ask that you think about our kids and consider the proposals that our neighborhood has sent to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Hello, Paul Sinclair, 12 Sunnyside Drive. I just want to echo the comments from my neighbors. I have a rising fourth grader. She's in third grade. I understand that it's not going to be, probability of her moving is going to be high going to Cumberland Hill. But we presented a few options. They're all non-financial impacting options, understanding that someone's going to have to make the cut. But just want to take an approach where we dim the light switch as opposed to just shutting it off on, across all grades, you know, just dropping the guillotine. I know my daughter, if she does transition, it's going to be a struggle for her. So I get a little emotional thinking about her making that transition. And I know there's many students that are going to, it's going to be a rainbow and sunshine type of transition. But as Sean mentioned, it's not a one-size-fits-all type of approach. So when you're making this business, financial, quantified, move A to B, you know, just don't forget the human aspect of it and take that into consideration when you're making this decision. And one comment I wanted to make is I'd love, I know that you mentioned about fish in the Blackstone River and the effect that it's having. It'd be great if we can apply some of those resources to seeing how this mentally impacts children that make this transition for those, I guess, the exception that don't have a successful transition. Because it'd be interesting to see how the mental impact takes place over time. But just my thoughts, and just don't forget the, the human impact of it when you make the decision, so. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Charlie Stebbins. I live at 27 Countryside Drive. I just wanted to echo and kind of support everything that my neighbors have been talking about. I think one important thing is I know when the McCourt discussion was going on, this is, it becomes about one school or the other. This is not what this is about. This is about establishing stability for our children who have had, gone through the last couple of years. You know, if, if, for me, if we were at Cumberland Hill currently and you were asking us to move to community, I'd be sitting up here and making the same argument. My daughter's currently in second grade, and my son's in kindergarten. I completely support the plan to consider the rising fifth graders as making an exception. But I do think that we need to have flexibility as a whole and really think about when we compare this back to the last redistricting plan in 2010. I think it's apples and oranges, considering what our kids have gone through over the past three years. It's taken a lot of work on your guys' part, on the teachers' part, on the principals' part, to get these kids back into school and get them back on track. And this would be another disruption. So I think that we're asking mainly for just flexibility and an openness to make certain compromises when considering this process and not just considering it in terms of buildings and numbers, but also considering it in terms of the individual student experience, which I know you guys value very much. Thank you very much.
Any other comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, we will move to the next item on the agenda, which is new business. And the first item is discussion under a vote to approve the revised student attendance areas boundary lines for John J. McLaughlin Cumberland Hill Elementary School.
I'm chair. I don't think we're ready for that tonight. Again, this is an area that Mrs. Feather and I and Superintendent and Mr. Chandler looked at in the maps, trying to gauge where children who are currently going to community should go to Cumberland Hill. And some of them, I don't want to say were no brainers, but there was a couple of streets that you can't get to, you cannot get to community without going past Cumberland Hill School. And those children are currently going there. So it's something we've looked at. We are still waiting for some final numbers in regards to it. And I would just like to say to the parents here tonight that are talking about, I know Dr. Thornton did call me and say some of the items that were presented to him and Mr. Fiorello were probably doable. And so it's just a matter of sitting down again, looking at the map. Once we have the final elementary numbers for the amount of children, our mapping can kind of give us an idea how many children are in there for what grades. And so it's a matter of putting numbers in, taking numbers out to see where it stands. And, you know, we're just not ready for that. So I would make a motion that we table this to the next meeting. And hopefully, we'll have those other numbers where we can present a revised attendance map with the, the number of children that we project will go to Cumberland Hill School. So I would make that motion that we table it this time.
Mr. DiMona makes a motion to table the vote?
I would like to second that motion, you know, for the same reasons. And, and we need to, we need to take a further look at it.
So Mrs. Feather seconds that. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Fiorello.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the parents that did come out the other, the other day. I thought it was a, at least from where I was sitting, it seemed to be a productive conversation. I hope they felt the same way. And I think we do need to look at the, the suggestions that they made. I think it's important also to note that when we did the last, and in any time that we've done this in the past, it was before I was on the school committee, but my kids were at BF Norton at the time. I don't remember if Mr. DiMona was the principal at that time or not. But the effort was made to group the kids that were moving into this new school together in the same classrooms and to provide supports so that they could feel at home and, you know, start making new friends and, you know, really help them through that transition. I also know that in the past, when families moved within town, they've had the same argument. They don't want their kids, you know, they're uprooting the kid's life from one end of town to the other. They don't want, you know, like these folks here, they don't want their fourth graders to have to switch to fifth grade. And we've been able to make some, you know, the parents could make an appeal, and we've listened to those, or the superintendent would listen to those appeals. And where we can accommodate them, we have with the knowledge that we would not be able to provide transportation just because we would not have a bus from that area going to the new school or going to the old school. So there's a lot of options here. And absolutely, I know when Dr. Thornton talks, he talks about dots. And to him, you know, he's looking at trying to solve the problem from a dispassionate view, as we all really must. But at the same time, we need to really keep an eye on the very real effect that this would have on kids and be very mindful of that and make the transition as easy as possible. So speaking as someone who moved from one state to another in, in the middle of freshman year, so I understand that pain quite well. So, but we will have to just, you know, we'll have to look at all the data and see what we can do.
Mr. Collins?
I also want to thank everybody for coming out. You know, there's a lot of personal testimony by your own individual children, and obviously, we don't know your children. But, you know, it's hard to make these type of decisions, even speak up here on behalf of your children. But, you know, a lot of times when people come up here, they talk about being flexible, and then the people themselves are inflexible. I think what you've offered is incredibly flexible. I personally read the email that you sent the other day, and there are options. So I agree with the rest of the committee that we'll take a look at them. I do like the quote, "Dim the light switch, don't just shut it off." I don't know if that's an original that I can steal somewhere down the road if it's copyrighted. I wrote that down. I'm like, that's pretty good. So, yeah, we will, I mean, at least I definitely have an open mind regarding this. But you made, you know, you used our, my argument against me, which is very effective. It's just that you have to have an open mind, and it has to happen. But it doesn't mean it has to be a one-size-fits-all. So that did not fall in deaf ears, so thank you. And the superintendent's not here, obviously, tonight because he's sick. But, you know, we'll probably have to definitely, almost definitely have to make a decision in the next couple of weeks regarding this. But this helps, this definitely helps. So thank you for coming out.
Other comments? Okay, I want to also thank you all for coming out and appreciate that this is becoming a collaborative discussion. We are just, you know, literally, I am your neighbor or your next-door neighbor. And we are all trying to do the best that we can. And if we can keep an open and, you know, kind dialogue, that goes a long way as well. So we have a second to table the vote, a motion in a second. Any other comments? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? So it passes seven to zero that we will table the vote tonight. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Raptor Alert presentation.
Chair, Madam Chair. Mike Chandler will take that presentation for you. Good collaboration. It's a big collaboration. Going through some of introduction of what Raptor is, how we've come about with it, and give a brief demonstration and a little story about it. So the Raptor app itself is something that we've collaborated with the town for. So the application gives us the ability to provide emergency notifications to whoever has the app installed or anything else in the building. We've started looking at it with the school department as well as partnering with the town so that the police department and EMS will also be notified. And any of the town buildings will also be part of this. So in the event of these emergencies, anybody that's at those locations, as well as school locations, depending on designation, will have the ability to either get notification for it or provide or start an incident. So at the beginning of it, we had started partnering with Court Middle School to do a pilot program. So we had a small group of people that we had used with it and tried to figure out how it was going to work, how it was going to be integrated with the classrooms, their emergency teams. And then slowly, we were able to see how it worked, see how we're going to be able to roll this out district-wide with our emergency plans and situations that it could be used in, not just the five incidents. So there's other pieces to the program that we're going to show you. And then we have Dr. Masterson here that'll just kind of give us a brief description of an incident that may have occurred.
So it was actually a pretty exciting day.
So, it was actually a pretty exciting day. We had a, our nurse came to me, which is typical protocol, and immediately found me and said that we had a staff member that we need to call EMS assistance for. So, I said, "Let's just try the program." And so I whipped it out on my cellphone, and I initiated a incident for emergency assistance. And I wrote in the note that, to our crisis team, because I have designated our crisis team to receive all of these incidences, so that they're aware of what's going on in the building at the time. Whether I need them or not, I still want them to know what's going on. So, like, I don't need Mr. Fernandez, our phys ed teacher, in this situation with the EMS bus showing up, but I want him to know that it's going on in case we need to move students, put the school down under restricted movement so the halls are clear. So I initiated the incident. I wrote that we have a staff member who needs assistance from an ambulance. We're almost at transition, so I want our students to move to their next period class. Then we'll go into a restrictive movement, and then we'll allow the EMS into the building to then transport that staff member. I wrote that all in the message, and I clicked send. And at the time, I watched Mrs. Storm, who was in the office, and I watched to see what would happen. And everyone started looking at their phones, and they waited for the message. They all got the phone call that says an incident has been initiated by the principal. Then she could talk about what it was like to receive it.
So, once I received it, it was actually, it was pretty cool, not the incident itself, but my watch is going off, the phone's ringing, I'm getting a text and an app alert. So it's hitting you from all angles, which is really great, because sometimes cell service cannot be good, so you're still getting the alert through the app. So it was hitting in all areas, so everything's digging. The message comes through, just like you said, complete sentences. So I knew what to expect if he wasn't in the office. I knew what had to get done as part of the crisis team. So it was very clear, concise, located him, and were able, like you said, to move the students safely. We had time to make the transition, so we kept on our normal day. So having this line of communication was amazing, because it's almost like back-channeling, so it wasn't upsetting the school environment. The kids didn't have that anxiety level of hearing an all-school announcement. So it was really great that the team members that had to be included in on this were, and we didn't upset the rest of the school. So it was really, it was great to keep the school calm in this transition.
And I think that's the biggest focus, is that it cuts down on ancillary noise. So we don't have to be on the walkie-talkie as much, talking to everybody. I literally sent it out, and Mr. Fernandez says, "Dr. Mastis, I got the message, where do you need me?" I said, "I need you in the B wing to control traffic, and then we'll go from there." That's it. And everyone else knew what was going on. Looking back at the situation, one of the funny things we saw is that we still followed old protocol with the nurse coming in to see me. She actually could have initiated it herself, and then we could have cut down on another three minutes. And then I could have just messaged everybody and said, "All right, we're going with Miss Hutchins said, this is what we're going to do," all in the message, so we didn't have to talk out loud. There are obvious situations that come up that we won't have time to get to the app. But, yeah. The other piece of that, so that is what's called team assistance. There are specific things like safety care calls, emergency assistance, and Michael will show you the rest. Those are only going to a team that I've identified as the crisis team. Then what Mike was referring to, or Mr. Chandler, was the top five, we call it, which is the evac, secure, lockdown. So there it is on the screen. So the top five, everyone who's in the geo-fence of McCourt Middle School, which is at our school, and Mr. Fiorello is very familiar with our area, it's the streets that border our school. That's how far our area is for our school. So it includes the baseball field, the woods behind us, all the way to Hope Street and on top of Highland Avenue. Everyone who has this app gets that message. So, that way, they're all aware. It pops up on the Chromebook if they're presenting, it pops up on the whiteboard that we're into lockdown, so we can very quickly go into lockdown quietly, without going on the intercom. Because, not to share inside secrets, but it's well-known, the only intercom in a building is in the main office. So, this actually enables all 70 faculty and staff members to call lockdown without a problem. We can take any questions now or after Mr. Chandler's all set.
Mr. Fiorello?
I'm not sure if Mr. Chandler is going to cover this, but is there a way to contact emergency services quicker? I know we had looked at previous systems in years past, so is that, I'm just jumping the gun on it. Yeah, okay.
Questions always good. So to kind of cover that now, the application will be available for all the staff members. It can be loaded onto a mobile device, it can be loaded on a laptop, Chromebook, get notifications with that. The nice part about it is instead of having the, having to have somebody call 911, which gets dispatched to Situate and then back to Cumberland, as we work with the police department and EMS, they'll have these devices, they'll have this application and notifications at the dispatch area, as well as in cruisers and things like that. So if there is somebody that is on duty, and they're closer to wherever that incident happens at the building, ideally it'll save seconds or minutes to get somebody to that building in the emergency quicker than a phone call could.
One additional thing that Mr. Chandler and I were fooling around with about four weeks ago while we were here one night, is we actually initiated an evacuation from here at McCourt. So obviously, when we had a situation a few years ago in McCourt where the police station called me and they say, "We have an intruder in the neighborhood, please go into lockdown." Well, if they call me on my cellphone, and I'm up here for a meeting at Central Office, I can initiate a lockdown and then contact Mrs. Storm and say, "We're locked down because it is an intruder." Heard from the police station, get into it, and I'll be back.
So when he initiated that, Ms. Rayo and myself, we got the notifications, and we're at home, on the couch watching TV, we immediately text Dr. Mastis, and like, "Is everything okay? Do we need to head back to school for something?" So it does work offsite.
Mr. Collins?
I was actually at the town meeting when they authorized the purchase of this, and this is one of those things that you hope you never need, but you're glad you have it when you do need it. When I was there, and I really want to thank the people on the town side, I know Councilor Kench is here and the mayor, for agreeing to this, I saw the presentation by the people who produced the software. So, there is a notification process. Can you explain, because it's flexible? When they were just giving them the general overview, I have more specific questions on how this applies to Cumberland. So if there is a lockdown, when are parents notified? Is there an automatic notification to parents that their son or daughter's student has gone into lockdown?
Currently, it's set up and designed to let everybody know in the building first, because we don't want to send a message out to families until we know what actually is going on in the situation. So there are abilities to, depending on what that is, it can be linked to our other mass notification system, where an email could get auto-generated and pushed out. At some point, we'll get to that area. But until we can work through the system and figure out what some of the issues we may see are, and everybody gets acclimated to it, because it's kind of like, you know, muscle memory of how you're going to use something in that situation, how you're going to panic, some of the pieces to it. I mean, it does give us the ability to help with some false notifications, because if you go to initiate something, if you notice on the screen, it'll come up. The emergency, depending on what it is, will come up. You have the ability to cancel it, but even if I'm sliding it, and if I don't go over to the end to hold it, it shouldn't initiate the emergency. So we're hoping that once people get used to it, we've tested it, we've done some drills with it, that those are some other pieces that we can add on to it.
And anybody can initiate a lockdown, if I remember correctly.
Correct. Anyone with the app.
Teacher, so Mike, Mr. Chandler, and I have reviewed, and 85% of our faculty and staff have voluntarily downloaded the app to their cellphones.
I just, I also, there was a feature, if I remember correctly now, it's been a few months, but, you know, they talked about, God forbid, there's some, be some sort of events, you know, a serious event, whereas they call, you know, I think they call it the fog of war. I don't know how it applies to schools, but there's a lot of confusion. If you ever study any of these events, there's a lot of confusion. One of the issues is, I think this app offers, if there is something, you can be initiated, where students can mark themselves safe, so that parents are notified. Because obviously, if there's an event, everybody's like, they rush the school, you know what I mean? They want, as has happened repeatedly at these unfortunate events. Is that something that'll be offered, where the parents can access it, and the students can mark themselves safe, the teacher or some sort of adult can mark them safe?
Depending on what the emergency is, so in the event, say, an evacuation, there is a reunification piece to it. So in that, it rosters with Aspen. So when the teachers are taking attendance to figure out where everybody is, they'll go through that, and also goes to the secretary at the front desk, so that we can rectify that information, to figure out who's there, who's missing, and then they can be notified that way.
I think, Mr. Collins, what your question is more of communication outside of the building regarding the crisis inside the building.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, inside the building in one of these situations is the most important thing, but again, you see these events, as a parent, you know, I would like, "Oh my God, you know, you're going to rush down, and you're going to leave work." Everybody rushes the building, and you can't get in, the police, you know, whatever. Again, God forbid, I mean, it is, this is something we hope that God never happens.
Right, so we, once an initiation takes place, of like a top five, we call it, we then enact our actual safety procedures. So our safety procedures start from the incident within the school, to the students who are around the incident, to then outside the building. So it takes coordination. What this does is allows to free up me, as the incident commander of our school, technically, to then turn over the incident command to the police department when they show up. And that's really the more important piece of what you're talking about. One of the things that Mr. Chandler and I also have talked about imperative for next year, is that when families fill out their information to, for our schools, for contacts, that we really specify, we need to know, "What is your cellphone number?" Because a lot of families have now, like at my house, we've gotten rid of the home line, and we just use our cellphones. But they're putting their cellphone number as their home line, because they believe that means your number one contact number. No, no, if it's not a home number, landline. We need it under cellphone, so that we can then send out those text messages through our communication system that's part of the district. So those are some, like, phase one, phase two. Like, we have some phase steps to complete, to make sure that our system is comprehensive enough to handle the entire situation from beginning to reunification at the end.
So I, Dr. Thornton presented this to the Health and Wellness Committee, and I was actually really impressed with it. As a former teacher, you know, it's, as Mr. Collins said, something you hope you would never have to deal with, but the society in times that we live in, you never know. A few of the things that really impressed me were the fact, and I think this needs to be highlighted more in it, is how much time you shave off getting emergency response. I mean, when you're, unfortunately, Dr. Thornton uses the word, not unfortunately, Dr. Thornton uses the word "bad guys," you know, when there's a bad guy. Unfortunately, if you have that situation, minutes matter. And so I think that direct alert going to police officers in their cars here in town, instead of going out to Situate, coming back to Cumberland, getting dispatched, which I don't know if people realize, I didn't realize that that happened until I was at that meeting. When you call 911, it goes out to Situate, and then back to Cumberland, and then someone. So I liked, he said, I think it was, three to seven minutes can be shaved off in response time, and that can be a huge difference. The other thing was, I believe that it allowed you to also, if, again, bad guy situation, to tell different sections of the school whether it was safe to evacuate, or if they had to shelter in place, which can be, again, very important in a building such as this, where you have very large areas. I like that ability to immediately contact people and share that information, and also checking in with the students, and a teacher immediately being able to say, "I'm missing these two students," and it goes right, and they know right away students are missing. So I just, I think it's a really good thing. I know, I'm thinking people, some people might be hesitant to put it on their phones, but I think, and this extends to the town as well. If there's an incident at the monastery, at the library, there's an incident at Town Hall, this is, again, something we hope we never have to use, but I think it's really a good step.
Just to add to that, Mr. Zdowski, as a former teacher, and obviously, Mr. Collins as a current teacher, you all knew that when we were in a lockdown, the only people who actually knew what was going on were the people who are trying to mitigate the problem. With this app, every single person who has the app now can see live communication at the same time that everyone on the crisis team is, so teachers will feel empowered to then be able to make those decisions regarding, "All right, the C wing can evacuate to our evacuation area, because the situation is mobilized to just the B side." So, teachers feel empowered, and that's a good place to be. Nobody wants to be scared, especially when you're in charge of 25 kids in that moment.
And so what is the timeline for this going to all the schools?
Ideally, by the end of May, we should have it completed in all the buildings. So, McCourt was our pilot program, and we've met with all the buildings to kind of get it installed, figure out where we're going to go next with it, had the discussions with the other buildings of the team members, and we're in the process of rolling that now. So after the break, first week of May, we'll be doing some more outreach with them, and then hopefully have it finished by the end of May. So, on that note, as we were talking about time and trying to do things, and on how quickly it can be, we're just going to do a quick team assist demonstration, just so you can see how quickly something can go out. We'll use medical assistance as an option. We're just going to do my phone, yeah, everything else, not ringing. We'll initiate it. Anybody that's on this particular group, which I'm using the water department right now as a, as an example, so as you hear things, they'll stop popping up. So you'll get notifications through the application itself, you also get a text message, and then, at some point, which I believe I have turned off right now, so the phones don't ring, the phone would ring, because it is a notification. If you have a smartwatch, it'll go to your watch. And then if you have it on your desktop, it will also pop up with a red exclamation point that takes this lower corner of the screen. So if there's boards up, if they're logged into their Chromebook, all that information will be right there for them. So, once they see this particular incident as it's there, depending on what it is, if there's any document details that go along with it, if there's a document that somebody wanted to add to it, they'd have the ability to do that. And then, once it's done, it's just as simple as, whoever decides that the change is over, they'll close the incident, then everybody will get a notification, let them know that everything's clear, depending on what the situation was, and then the notifications will go back out, which is pretty quick.
Mr. Fiorello?
Mr. Chandler, without going into too much detail, I know in the past we've discussed certain cellular problems in parts of the town. Does this solve that problem?
This does not solve that problem.
Okay.
So with Wi-Fi, there are some things that are going on with the government right now, whether looking to do some additional Wi-Fi in towns and things like that, that's going to be money available. Not sure exactly where that is. This is just an app, so it'll work with, whether you're on a cell circle, or if you have Wi-Fi, whether it's, you know, in your house, if it's in your building, it's in town buildings, which most of them have, that they'd be able to be communicated that way.
The town expressed to you about, we had, in the past, we discussed repeaters, I think they were called, to kind of boost the signal strength in parts. Has that discussion gone anywhere?
We've had those discussions in the past, we have not had it with discussing this app, though.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And, oh, do you have a question, Mr. Damano?
I have a question.
Okay, all right, perfect. Well, thank you for all your work on this, and thanks for piloting it at McCourt. We look forward to getting this rolled out everywhere. Okay, the next item on the agenda is discussion under a vote to approve resolutions. Mr. Collins?
All right, I have some good news and some bad news. The good news is this is going to go a lot faster. The bad news is Ms. Feather is not going to get to see me, hear me read the resolutions, which is the high point of her week. And for those in town who, and for those in town who watch me read the resolutions as a cure for insomnia, those days are over, because as we move into more construction, the resolutions are going to be, we're going to be getting into the 30s and 40s. So after consulting with some other members, and Mr. Adams, we do not have to read these individually, as I've been doing. So what we're going to do, and all of these resolutions have been vetted through fiscal subcommittee, and they are available to the public online. So we've gone through these, and we've asked questions, and obviously, the committee can do the same here. Mr. Pignano's here as well. So, I have 15 resolutions this evening. The first thing I'm going to ask the committee to do, and all of them past subcommittee, three to zero, the only thing I would ask before we begin, so the procedure is a little bit different than how I've done it, so bear with me. I would like, number four, SCPI-04-2022-32, the change orders for Cumberland Hill. The subcommittee recommended three to zero that we table this, and I would move the committee, I would ask the committee to do the same right now, before I move on to the other 14 resolutions. There were some concerns we have, there's some questions we have to look back questions we have to look back at. Mr. Brignano did not have answers for us at our subcommittee meeting. So, we'd like to table it this evening, so we can get some clarification. So, I'm asking for the committee to table number four, SCPI-04-2022-32.
Mr. Adams, do we need to vote on that?
I think Mr. Collins would give him the name.
Okay. So, Mr. Collins makes a motion to table number four. Ms. Smith seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. It passes seven to zero.
Now, I would like to point out that SCPR-04-2022-29 through 43, minus the one we just tabled, all passed fiscal subcommittee three to zero, and I would move passage of the remaining 14 resolutions.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve, all of them from 29 to 43, with the exception of 32. Second by Mrs. Rogowski. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. The resolutions pass seven to zero. Awesome.
All right.
Okay. You're not done yet, though, Mr. Collins. Next up, discussion and/or vote to approve payment of bills.
Yes, we have payment of the bills in the amount of $1,420,426.85. This passed fiscal subcommittee three to zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve payment of bills. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rogowski. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. It passes seven to zero. Next item on the agenda is school committee comments, school liaison reports. Any comments from the school committee? Mr. Fiorella?
I had the pleasure on Monday to read to both kindergarten classes at BF Norton. It was nice to get back into a normal routine of being in a school building. I wish I had been able to read on the other invitations that I received from other buildings. It was just a great time. And, you know, I thank the schools for inviting me and others.
Mrs. Rogowski? Just to go off of that, a quick reminder that a lot of volunteers are now being allowed in schools, so it'd be prudent, if you would like to volunteer in your child's school, that you have to get your BCI done. And it does have to be notarized ahead of time, which could be done with your friendly neighborhood notary, or the library, or I believe the UPS store, the post office, bank, lots of different places. But, definitely get those BCI's done.
Any other comments? Mr. Demana?
Madam Chair, I just want the public who's watching on video tonight and those in person, that some of these resolutions that we just approved in a bunch were also vetted through the building committee, and there were change orders or design services estimating. And I just wanted the public to know that, you know, someone else looked at them other than the school committee. The practice has been to go in front of the building committee first to make sure everything is in order, and if we have a question, we table it, and then get an answer back. So, I just want the public to know that we're just not skipping through this all of a sudden and trying to pull the wool over your eyes. The second is to the parents who met with Dr. Thornton and Mr. Fiorella, and those that have written numerous emails to us, we appreciate it, because it gives us an idea of where you are and where we are with the redistricting that we have to happen. And, as I said earlier, when Dr. Thornton called me on the phone and said, "Some of their ideas we could probably do." So, it's just a matter of get more information and making the right choice once only. So, I just want the public to know that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Collins?
I want to wish everybody, well, I guess tomorrow's Passover begins at sundown, so happy Passover to our Jewish brothers and sisters, and for those who celebrate Easter, happy Easter, and I think a well-earned for the teachers and the administrators and anybody else affiliated with the schools, a well-deserved vacation. The weather's getting nicer, and things are slowly starting to feel like normal again. And, knock on wood, you just keep moving in that direction. So, have a good week, everybody. We'll see you.
And I just, I, oh, I want to comment that on Friday afternoon, Dr. Thornton took me on a tour of Cumberland Hill, and my kids went there for a couple of years. I hadn't been in that school for a long time. They're adding, you know, a brand-new wing, but essentially, they're doing a whole renovation refresh of the school, and with new common learning spaces and DaVinci rooms. And, when that school opens, it's going to be pretty spectacular. I was really, really impressed. And I know Dr. Thornton has offered, or will offer, you know, as, as the construction gets nearer to completion, doing tours for other people. And I know Mrs. Malcolm will, you know, I know that there will be a lot of kind of public outreach and, you know, getting people excited about the new school. So, it's, so the progress is really good. Yes, Mr. Fiorella?
You know, I just wanted to make mention of what Mr. Demana said about thanking parents for the emails. And considering the tone of a lot of the emails we've had over the last couple of years, it was really nice to receive respectful, you know, positive emails, just trying to solve a problem and working together to solve a problem, which was also very different than the last time we redistricted, as I'm sure Mr. Demana will mention, which was a very ugly conversation back then. So, I just want to say I appreciate the tone of everyone that's written to us.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is vote to go into executive session. We do not have another executive session tonight, so the next item is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Mrs. Rogowski makes a motion to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Fiorella. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned at 8:17 PM. It passes seven to zero. Thank you.